Okay, so Diane, I think you're the one that requested to have some time to talk about fracking. We'd probably like to do, because of our schedule, do this in about 20 minutes?
Oh, I think that would be fine. And actually, we're very grateful for this opportunity. And actually, I'm going to turn the floor over to a number of residents who have taken the time to be here. And should there be a few minutes at the end, I probably, I have a gift to bestow. It's not a gift. It's an educational tool for you, Tracy, personally, and I'll explain it very quickly and briefly.
Okay. All right. And the only thing we ask is that when you get ready to speak, is just state your name so we have it on the record, okay?
Should we come up?
Sure. Wherever you want to, wherever you feel comfortable.
Yeah, and then we'll take turns, right? Sure. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Hi.
For this opportunity, I love following all scouts because I think we're all good scout community.
And then your name's what?
My name's Catherine West. I live in Monson Township.
Yeah.
And I'm Kathy Hanretty. I live in Chatham Township.
Good.
And I've worked with a cooperative of farmers, and I've become aware recently of the issues around fracking, a dog fracking. And we seem to be facing this oil and gas rush, as my people call it. And I think it's called that because it's moving fast. And there's nothing wrong with taking advantage of opportunities, but it's just important enough to give steps, especially when it comes to safety and health and welfare. So I, the residents of Jogga County, including myself, my family, we look to our officials, our commissioners, to protect the health and welfare of Jogga residents, to protect our tourist industry, which is vital, and to protect our farmers and farmlands, now and for future generations. The farmers that I work with are aware that they could get some quick, fast money by leasing the mineral rights to their property, but they are investing for future generations. A lot of them are grass farmers, raising beef. They are certified organic vegetable farmers. So the cleanliness of their soil, air, and water is very important to them. And so, I'm here asking you to do a couple of things. I've become aware that there is a pending US EPA investigation into the impact of fracking. Won't be out until 2014. So to me, it seems it would be prudent and a conservative action, actually, to wait until that report is released to go ahead with fracking. Because we don't know what they're going to say. It's not, it's not easy to back up and correct something if it's done improperly. It's easier to have the facts ahead of time and do things right. So I'm asking you to please call for moratorium on these fracking actions until that US EPA report is released. And also, to please do everything within your power to make sure that this study is thorough, complete, unbiased, and comprehensive. Because I understand some of the industry intends to hold back information. There would be critical to results that mean something, that are meaningful. And I'm also asking that you call for complete disclosure from oil and gas companies of all chemicals and compounds used in their drilling and extraction processes. I understand that they guard these lists of chemicals as if it were their grandmother's chocolate chip cookie recipe or something. They won't disclose that information. These are toxins. And as a resident who might be exposed in the air and water, I want to know. First responders need to know. And I think that that's not too much to ask. So there's another thing you can do, this is a little more general, but you can help expand the conversation from a sort of tug-of-war debate about fracking to an intelligent discussion of our shared future directions in terms of energy, unemployment, and sustainability, and the livable environment and aesthetics of our communities. Jogga County residents are ready and willing to work with you toward preserving our traditions and way of life as we position ourselves for prosperity in the 21st century. And I thank you for your time and attention. There are a great many people who've been working longer and harder than me and have a lot of technical information.
Regarding the disclosure of the chemicals, I mean, that's been something that we've been long and hard trying to, trying to work on. We've talked to Senator Eklund about that before Senate Bill 315. Currently talking to John Patterson about that. I don't know that we'll, I think that we can get that disclosure.
Good.
I'm hopeful. I don't know if it'll be public record, but where I, what my concern is that our hazmat teams need to know when those chemicals are coming through this county, where they're traveling, and what's in those tanks, if we're going to respond.
Okay.
To be able to do this, it may be that it will be not public record, okay? But it'll be information that's shared with our local hazmat people prior to. And that's where we need to make sure that though, that team that's going to protect us has that ability. That could be the middle ground, obviously. Obviously, full disclosure is what everybody wants. We also want to have the ability that, that our local sheriff's department can stop a tanker and say, hey, do you have, do you have all your disclosure forms? Do you have your material safety data sheets on the, onboard? And you know, if that, if that truck's traveling through Jogga County and hasn't broken any other laws, the sheriff's department has no authority to just stop that truck to ask that. And we need to have that authority, too.
And I'd like to understand thoroughly what happens when you break through and you get this methane or whatever comes up from the ground, and what does it do to the environmental air within so many feet of any residential home? That's something, I'd like to understand that to a point of even when it's done correctly, is there something else there that we need to understand? Now, I do understand that Kent State University last night at seven o'clock at the Kiva Auditorium had two individuals there who spoke, they called it "promise or peril." I didn't get to go to that. I wish I had because it was giving both sides. And there was a gentleman from Poland who'd done a lot, and then there was another professor in chemistry and biology. I would have liked to have known. I don't know if that's available on CD or DVD, but I think it's important for us to understand, is there an air quality issue for those downed wind of the first frac? What, I just want to know that. I just want to understand that.
I think that's the study that EPA is.
That's the other one. Is that the one there? That would be informed.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Go ahead. What's your name?
Steven Corso, this is me. There is a study from the Colorado School of Public Health shows if you're within a half mile of a frac, when, when they first start getting the goods out, you're at elevated risk for cancer and non-cancers from some of the airborne chemicals that come out of the well, if you're within a half mile.
Now, is that because, you know, in areas like in Texas where you've got flat plain land, you know, there's a lot of air that moves, so when they open up something, it doesn't stay, there is no downside. But here, we're up, we've got hills and valleys, and I just wanted to understand that.
Yeah, this, that's a good point. This was specific to Battle Mesa, Colorado, and I can send you a link to the paper if you want. But I would imagine if you're in a valley, you might get settling of that air. Imagine if you're on the top of a hill, you might, it might be different results. But, you know, the studies are forthcoming, but some of them are out there already.
Well, how long does it stay in a valley, in an inversion area?
Yeah, I wouldn't know.
I want to know that.
Well, that was very important.
Can I, just, Tracy, I'm Catherine West, right? And Tracy, I'm, just the other people that need to know are your medical people, not just your hazmat, because they're going to have to deal with it.
Right.
Medical people want to deal with it.
So anyone who would be dealing with that.
That's, I'm just aware.
They need, they, there's no doubt about it. They need to know. You know, hopefully, there can be some little ground where it becomes not public information, but at least the safety forces, first responders, people like that will know this information. That's what we're hoping for. It was originally in Senate Bill 315 and got pulled.
Huh. There's a lot to be said about air, but I'm, I'm going to talk about water for a minute. My name's Catherine Hanretty, and I live in Chatham Township. Thanks very much for listening to us today. I've been working really hard to try and understand why we can consider any threat to our water an acceptable risk. I've been to all the industry websites. I've listened to the oil and gas industry lectures. I've been to some of their, their meetings. I've, I've been pretty diligent trying to educate myself. And the same facts keep leaping out at me. And these are not the words of environmentalists or activists. These are words right out of mouth for the industry insiders, and it's, spills, well failures, parts failures, gas leaks, and other accidents are certain to happen, because accidents happen. And somehow, the oil and gas industry consider those acceptable risks. But I have a hard time squaring that with the fact that water is the most precious and threatened resource on earth. We have a responsibility and responsibility to protect that for the future. Unlike other water consumers, the water used for hydrological fracture shale production is a completely consumptive use. Now, that means that whereas a farmer uses water, irrigates their field, it goes percolating back into the field, even a steel producer uses water, somewhat it gets used, that water percolates, you know, gets cleaned up and sent back into a, but with this industry, this is a completely consumptive use. The water is used, is completely removed from the hydrologic cycle. Yes, the industry is working hard to recycle that wastewater, and they're coming up with ways to purify that waste, but they cannot get it cost-effective, and cost is the name of the game. We're told that 4.5 millions of gallons of water is used per frac, but in at least two instances in Ohio, over 10 million gallons were used for the first frac. In a recent well in Michigan, they used 21 million gallons for the first frac. Unfortunately, sometimes they just drop a pipeline into a river to collect some of that water. Now, they would need to use many pipelines, so this is usually if they need extra water or what have you. But unfortunately, Ohio law is just not strong enough to prevent that from happening. And of all the uses, this is the most damaging. Because if you de-water a stream for even a short period of time, you may ruin the ecological systems in that water. And that's just part of the problem. The pollution from the spills that we talked about before, spills on wells, well sites, truck accidents, pipelines, and holding tank leaks, they all present known hazards to our water. And it's acknowledged by the industry. To them, this is a cost of doing business. But for those of us who live here, it's more important than that. So what I'm saying, though, is that we have the chance now to put in some places, put in place some protections. The county can actually do this. Our hands are not as tied as we would believe. Some of the steps that we can take are to refuse to sell or transfer water from county-owned water sheds to, so that we will protect our county, you know, any, any watershed that is on county property, protecting from that kind of diversion and overuse. We can actively promote baseline well water testing for our residents. And I would say that the suggested area radius that I was, that I believe is most prevalent is three miles from any shale drilling site. All of those well waters, wells should be tested to get a baseline, so that we know if there is a problem, what happened. Because right now, there's just not enough data out there. We could require corporations to offer some of the EPA certified testing to homeowners who are directly adjacent to well sites. And give the homeowners the right to use independent labs rather than just take their, take the word of the industry. Also, we should promote baseline testing of surface water. Because what happens if a spill on the road does happen? How do we know how extensive that is if we don't have some baseline data? So we should actively encourage the education of our freshwater resources by citizens, but also invite the Jogga Soil and Water Conservation District to step up some of their citizen patrols of water sources. And if they don't have the manpower to do that, the Seer Club is also doing some water sentinel testing. And it's just, it's basically citizen science, but it gives us some baseline information. We can also invite environmental consulting groups like Frack Tracker to study some of the potential water migration and well protection monitoring systems. Currently, that, a lot of that information isn't out there. We don't know how the water moves deep under the soil, and it would be, you know, deep under the earth, it would be a good thing for us to know. So mapping of aquifers and determination of some of those migration paths would be good information for us to have, and there are resources that can help even at no charge determine some of that. So, and most importantly, in every situation, we need to think hard about the long term. Don't enter into any activities that have long-term damage unless you take a careful look at all of the potential consequences. Thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You have.
Yep. Yep. Thanks. Skip?
I'd like to have five minutes to balance the discussion you just had.
You can have five minutes, that's fine, not today. If you're really jam-packed, but I'd be glad to give you five minutes on Tuesday. Was that all right, or?
Well, we've got, we've got the audience here today, and we've got Diane and Tom filming it. So it'd be nice to have some time to say, but, I mean, it doesn't, it would have been nice to have more balance today rather than the one-sided discussion, and so.
All right. Let's.
This is available.
Have you ever been to Ohio?
Yeah, be careful. Be careful.
Yes, okay. I'm here telling you, I've been just working with the Monson Trustee, trying to, they have had a meeting, and.
Which was all the other side.
No, the other side. And they're having another meeting. Let me, let me go, I better not just go off on, okay. April 4th, they're having another meeting, and I'm hoping that this will be a meeting of more questions and answers, because now everybody's been flooded with a lot of information, but they don't get a chance to ask questions sometimes. So that's what, what I'm working on. And I presented them with a copy of the actual resolution that Newberry passed February 2nd, and I thought if you guys wanted to look at that. And I feel that it's really important for us to, to go to all of our elected officials, because you folks are the ones that I've said here to, to protect us. And you're the ones that are over it all. You can kind of see the whole picture. And hopefully, that you will be thinking of the, the well-being of all of us, of including yourselves with the water and the air. The air is, is even sometimes more of a concern, because that's kind of immediate with the emissions that happen right when the fracking is done. So just last night, Fort Collins, Colorado banned fracking. The following communities in Jogga have passed resolutions regarding fracking: Newberry, Clarton, Burton Village, Chester, and Russell. And as Kathy brought up, there's so many, many, clearly a lot of concerns that I feel need to be addressed. And of course, to me, the one major is the water. Because we can really, not very easily, but we can live without gas and oil, but we really can't live without water. And Kathy Hanretty has made up some information that I think would be interesting for all of you. I brought some of it to look through. Some of the concerns outlined there, and also some stories from the Shea from Pennsylvania. And you have one, too. Okay. And so that, I'm so concerned as a citizen, and I'm also concerned about does Jogga County as being, what Jogga County is. And I don't mean to throw the rest of the rules, but I think that we, we have a special gem. Whether you travel anywhere, you know that, that we have something really special to take care of. So I appreciate you folks.
Yeah, thank you.
Tracy?
On the, what she was saying, the Kathy Hanretty of the water, is this, should they focus on also with the city of Akron, because our biggest water is, isn't that pretty much controlled and owned by Akron more so as far as?
Well, I mean, they have the largest watershed of any entity.
I know.
So. I, you know, getting back to that, getting back to that water, you're starting to see the industry that is recycling. And, and they're doing so because it's economically viable, you know, for them to do so. So they're not injecting it back down on the ground as much as, as what you think. And so they don't use as much water. So that's a good thing. We want to encourage them to recycle that. Yes, ma'am?
I, I have.
And your name is?
I'm Kathy Flora from Tompkins.
Oh, okay.
And I've been a reader. Okay. Because much, much today has been said about the adverse effects of shale fracking on the environment and our health, which is very important. And the counter to these concerns has always been the promise of the enormous amount of jobs and economic benefits that the industry brings to local communities. Unfortunately, the financial gains for communities are more complicated than they have felt to expect. A Cornell University study shows that rural regions whose economies are dependent on natural resources extract, frequently have poor long-term development outcomes. In some cases, they end up worse after boom-bust cycle than they were before. It finds that volatile revenue creates demands on local government that persist long after the local boom ends, with a small, much smaller tax base to support it. Its study of 26 western state energy-dependent counties showed less economic diversity, lower levels of education, more income inequality, and were less able to attract investment than were similar counties without extractive industries. Pennsylvania was also promised a huge influx of jobs from gas drilling. Its shale boom started earlier than ours, so we have the benefit of their experience. Sadly, Pennsylvania is among the few states that have a higher unemployment rate in December 2012 than in December 2011. The vice presidential debate highlighted this point this fall when it was pointed out that Scranton's unemployment rose from 8.4 in 2009 to 9.6 in the middle of its drilling boom. After years, Pennsylvania's unemployment rate being well below the U.S. average, it is now rising even as the national rate is falling, and even though Pennsylvania has become the third-largest producer of natural gas in the country. The economic problems of hospitals in drilling areas are severe, as they are being swamped by uninsured laborers working dangerous jobs and are sinking under a skyrocketing debt. The hospitals in western North Dakota seeing their combined debt rise by 26% in the past two years, and some in PA are operating at a loss for the first time in years. The economic promises of the gas industry ignore the cost and hardships that communities suffer during the boom and the problems they will be left with later. Based on what has happened elsewhere, communities can be in much worse shape after drilling has ended than before it started.
I just wanted to mention, in North Dakota, wasn't it North Dakota that wanted to get rid of all their property taxes because of the boom and the cash flow that was made from this? I mean, that's the only thing I, I'm a little confusing, because I know that they have made so much money in North Dakota, and they tried to eliminate all property taxes. But it didn't fly. Schools were concerned that once it was bought.
You build all this infrastructure, and then you have, go, you don't need to maintain that infrastructure.
But I thought they were saying that it would last, you know, that once they start one well, then there's another 30 years, and then.
Yeah, well, that's, and I did, we didn't have, go into that today, but, but it is Deborah Rogers, who's up in Miami, out of Texas and Colorado, really thinks that this is our next housing boom. It's going to be a shale boom, and this is a pyramid. And it's not all that it's promised, and that's going to tear down our economy. So there's a lot, a lot to read, and a lot, so much information, too. I mean, you know, you need, and we've been studying both, hearing a lot of both. And, and we can get a lot of, yeah, a lot.
A lot of reading.
A lot of reading. Thank you, Doc.
All right, thank you for coming out. Okay. All right. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak on behalf of? Skip, do you know what five minutes is?
Just, just a sec. If, if there are no one else who's going to come forward, then I get, I get to be the last one by choice or determination. But I'm Diane Jones. My husband Tom and I operate Vinton Vold Farm, English translation, Win the North. And I wouldn't take much of your time, because I've already talked to two of you previously and provided you with a report and a DVD. But I am going again to present this information. Perhaps Mr. Spinaleri has not seen it, with particular reference and relevance pages 55 through pages 60, which encompass graphs and table work relevant to studies about the impacts of gas and oil welling, oil well drilling on livestock. And pages 59 and 60 are particularly important to me, because what is referenced is the case of instant death of dairy cattle, cattle, from exposure to groundwater. This report is so important to me that I have made contact with Senator Eklund's office three times and have not heard back yet. I have announced earlier in the week to Senator Eklund's office that I do expect to have a conversation with him tomorrow, and forwarded that information to him again. So I am hopeful that we will have a healthy discussion about it, one that considers all points of view. But those particularly for livestock ranchers who are, who take much pride in their animals. For many of us, it's not just a living, it is a way of life. Additionally, and this will be short, you received directives that were prepared and distributed by Kathy Hanretty. Additionally, that some of what I have here, and I think there are three, indeed there are, but they are directives based on those. There are also ideas that I came up with myself, and if I could direct your attention most, most particularly to numbers two, five, and seven. And I think number two is particularly relevant, because it asks the county to establish nominal cost or free water testing for residents as we get closer to this problem. But I think when you consider that $300 to $500 is an average price for tier-three testing, I think that is a severe burden on, on county residents. It's something I will hope that we might consider for the future. I referenced earlier, Tracy, I referenced a learning tool, and it was referenced also by Kathy Flora. The presenter is Deborah Rogers. She's not from around here. She's actually a Dallas, Fort Worth resident. And what is particularly relevant is that she made her living for 10 years as a financial advisor to Merrill Lynch and Smith Barney. Subsequent to that, in 2002, in a venture that's near and dear to our own hearts, she established a cheesemaking farm, also in Texas, and lived to feel very successful about it and very proprietary about it. And this particular tape is called "The Economics of Fracking," and it deals with an aspect that hasn't been covered here yet, which I will leave you with. And it has to do with the economic consequences of fracking from a point of view that has not been discussed here yet. So I will present this to you, and if you find it not only interesting but relevant to Jogga County, I would ask to share it with the other two commissioners. And finally, I will leave this body with a couple of quotes that came out of a February 8 conference in Kansas City. It was entitled "New Partners for Smart Growth," and that the topic was fracking. And the quotes are the following. "Environmental issues underscore the need for good leadership, and people should hold their leaders accountable to the issues they feel passionate about." All right, what we have to focus on from a smart growth standpoint is how do we plan and mitigate and look into the future? This is an opportunity, and that opportunity has challenges that we all have to face together. I am encouraged. their leaders accountable to the issues they feel passionate about." What we have to focus on from a smart growth standpoint is how do we plan and mitigate and look into the future? This is an opportunity, and that opportunity has challenges that we all have to face together. I am encouraged by the fact that people are coming together and are talking about it, and there's leadership being developed, let's think about it into the future. And I can't put it any better than that, and we thank you, all of us, for the time that you have allowed us to present some of these ideas, and we will be saying prayers for you, for the guiders, guide, I will get it right, for the leadership, obviously, the leadership and the guidance that you can provide us. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Skip, I'd like to give you five minutes, but we really are, we're going to have a rather lengthy executive session, so if you want to do whatever you do in the session, talk about this, I would suggest you get put on the agenda, and then that way people can, who get the agenda will know you're going to talk about this. Is that, okay? And then I'll give you, I'll give you 10 minutes. Then I'll give you 10 minutes.
Well, you provided us with those CDs.
I did. But I'll, I'll let this comment real quick, just to point out some myth that we heard today. First of all, the chemicals that are in the fracking fluids are easily found, and if you'd like, I can, I can provide those to you. What's not easily found is the formulations, because those are adjusted per the fracking period. I actually had a gas well drilled, an oil and gas well drilled fracked 20 years ago. I'm very familiar with the process. Ben Lupo, who just is going to be going to jail shortly, was the guy that did my well in Youngstown. I had a contract that was airtight. These contracts are private contracts on a private property with the oil companies. When you do these contracts, you ensure that the contracts are sound, you won't have a problem with fracking. The water tests are all, the cost for the water test and so forth are in the contract, the gas companies pay for them, they're neutral, you can take them to an, so all of these problems that we heard today can be mitigated away by proper attention. All of us want the same thing. All of us want clean water, clean air, yada, yada, yada. But, I mean, a testimony to the fact that this is not a problem that people would like to portray it to be, is there's thousands of these wells going in across the country today. You don't see dead cows laying all over the place. You don't see dead people laying all over the place. You don't hear about water being polluted, with a few exceptions when some criminal puts water, you know, but that happens in all kinds of industries. And so we'll talk more about that in depth, but, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of.
Agenda for when Skip's going to be on, and then please come, okay? I'd like to take more questions on this, but we really can't, I'm sorry. So at this point in time, we're going to draw a close to, to that issue at this point. We need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of a public employee, and we would want the record to show that, and the Davis will be joining us, Dave Laird. Colling will be joining us.
I'm not sure.
And Sally Bell, correct?
Can you identify the department that we're talking about with a public employee?
Yeah, I just said Sally Bell will be joining us in executive session. So this is Department and Agent.